To call the meeting to order. All members are present besides Sherri. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a special recognition at the beginning of our meeting. Nicole Adams is going to recognize Cody Harder and Wyatt Wallford.
Thank you. It is my pleasure to introduce Cody Harder and Wyatt Wallford. Both of these students who are members of the graduating class of 2019 have qualified as National Merit Commendation Scholars through the 2019 National Merit Scholarship Program. They qualified for this by taking the PSAT. And about 34,000 commended students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Commended students place among the top 50,000 scorers of more than 1.6 million students who entered the 2019 competition by taking the 2017 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. The young men and women being named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. Commented a spokesperson for National Merit Scholarship. These students represent a valuable national resource recognizing their accomplishments as well as their key role, the key roles that school plays in their academic development is vital to the advancement of educational excellence in our nation. We hope that this recognition will help broaden their educational opportunities and encourage them as they continue their pursuit of academic success. And we have certificates here to present to Wyatt and to Cody.
Thank you.
For you. Congratulations. And congratulations.
All right.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero. Committee reports. Policy?
We did meet a few weeks ago. Just minor changes per administration and then changing to match MSBA's policies.
Southwest Metro?
Southwest Metro met last Tuesday. And Tim DeBurner was our guest superintendent. He did an outstanding job. One of the highlights of the meeting was a report on a program called Passageways. It's a program that helps students that have serious mental issues. And it provides therapy during the school day. So they attend school, but they also have therapy to help them with their issues of mental health as well. So it's a very good program. And it's a program that students can go into and then hopefully leave after some successes. But the student that we had that did our presentation for us was actually a student that's going to be graduating from Southwest Metro. And she's been in the program for actually four years. And she just spoke so highly of it. She said it really made the difference between her ability to be able to stay in school and graduate and not being able to do so. So yeah, she spoke really, really highly of her experiences in this program. Then we had our regular issues of the night. Approval of several programs. And we also had a report on the programs. And the programs are all running quite full, which is a good thing as far as finances are concerned. Full programs are good for the Southwest Metro programs and also for the member districts as well. We spent a number of minutes talking about the calendar for next year. Our calendar is a very hard calendar to get going as far as Southwest Metro is concerned. It's kind of a program that has, a calendar that has to take into account everybody else's calendar before it can be finalized. And we usually go with the two largest districts as far as being the ones that kind of push the boat, so to speak. And we're very close to having it be approved now. We had our first reading of it. So we've got that in line for the next school year. We also had a couple of donations to our program from several foundations and several individuals. And we also talked about the budget for the upcoming year. And I believe that was about it. It was a very good meeting.
Thank you. CPAC, did that meet?
Yes, we had our CPAC meeting a couple of weeks ago. And at CPAC, we had a presentation of the programs that are available through our special needs programs in our district and also the numbers of students that are enrolled in each of those individual programs. We also had a report on a very nice website that parents can access. It's kind of like a sharing type of program where parents of students with special needs have some, you know, things that they like to share positively or some things that are being challenging to them as parents of special needs students can get some help from other parents who might be experiencing the same kind of problems or have some type of insight that they might be able to share with other parents. So it's a very, very nice website that they've got going. And people that have participated in it spoke very highly of it as well. And then we also had, I believe, a person who spoke about some of the experiences that they had in the area of special needs, being a parent of special needs students. And spoke again, very highly of our programs that we have here at New Prague. Very much in favor of what we've got going here in New Prague as far as our special services are concerned.
Thank you. Community Ed?
Community Ed. The long awaited winter-spring brochure will be delivered on Friday to all district residences. In first place now for the popular classes is snowmobile safety, followed closely by elementary basketball, elementary volleyball clinic, and winter youth dance clinic. Two of the schools, elementary schools are doing dancing for Apex. So I guess they decided to have a winter youth dance clinic. A trip for the day, Trippers Dinner Theater. And the December senior citizens celebrate the joy of the season in Lonsdale, Elko, Newmarket, and New Prague. And probably the most important part, the community education is sponsoring the Giving Tree out here in the front lobby. It contains items requested by 14 struggling families in our school district. Feel free to contribute if you wish.
Thank you. Early childhood.
Yes, we met October 30th and received project updates. The social-emotional grant, Concepts of Kindness, that was, that we received last year continues. And that's, they train daycare people to, and provide these kits so that they can work with the kids on different concepts of kindness. The Let's Play Saturdays will begin in January and continue through March. There are a few less Saturdays this coming winter because of the availability of the gym here in the C E C. The Buddy the Bookworm crates that are at the area restaurants are being reloaded. And they're going to redo the signs so that people know that they can take the books with them and keep them if they want. And the daycare provider support group and trainings also continue. And now they're thinking about establishing a welcome packet for new daycares. The website for early childhood continues to be updated. And the biggest problem is getting people to know that it's out there. And we have for future projects, Kenzie Wilcox wrote a grant for support for pregnant women that's called New Mama Village. And so we're waiting to hear if that will be received. And then Mary Bartusik was meeting with some of the district staff to talk about providing transportation on a limited basis for preschool students who can't get here otherwise. And that's it.
Thank you. Superintendent reports.
Yes. First off, just want to report the Fitness and Aquatics Center memberships. Everything's going great. We've been going now for a couple of weeks right now. And Megan Geeson and Heather Odo, the two managers of the Aquatics and Fitness Center have done a great job along with their staff. So we wanted to have over 70% retention from the male Fitness Center memberships and also get 15% new. And we're over those projections basically overall already right now. And so things are looking good, very positive. Also want to congratulate Ben Teague and the entire, all the students in the musical Nine to Five. Wonderful, wonderful job. It's always, every year, it's a great fall musical. And Nine to Five was fun, was fun. I went there a week ago Sunday. So hats off to them, very positive. Winter sports, you know, girls hockey started with games. Now this week, we've got girls basketball and boys and girls hockey games going on at home this week. And we got the big wrestling invite, the Doc Burg Invitational this Saturday. So a lot of things going on getting started here in the winter sports season. So we encourage people to get out there and support our students. And again, like I mentioned last time, congratulations. And we have them in the audience tonight, our three new school board members, Leo Geeson, Mark Bartusik, and Tammy Paxa. Again, congratulations to them. Look forward to working with them. That'll be it.
Want to talk about your new coaching activities?
Rather not talk about coaching right now. But yeah, it will be an interesting winter.
Next, we're having an update on AJ the Therapy Dog. How do we get him on the camera? There we go. You know, you might, you might have to go talk in the, wait, could you go talk into the mic there?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Because I don't know if it'll get picked up if they're not close. I guess we need a portable one to.
Right.
This is the first time we've had a dog in here, so.
Okay, so she's been coming to Falcon Ridge this year a couple of times a month. And staff and students are really loving it. I'm getting an overwhelming response, all positive feedback, a few comments. Well, first of all, she's there for support and comfort. There's a lot of research coming out about therapy dogs, saying that they lower anxiety, they increase mood, they can decrease stress and heart rate and blood pressure. There have been studies done in hospitals and all around the world. So there is a lot of research behind it. What I've been having her do so far this year is meet with some students individually and then go into a few classrooms. And the kids are loving it, the teachers are loving it too. So a couple of comments that I've, I've heard from people, just to throw in what they're saying. So if you know of the book, Have You Filled a Bucket Today? It's about if you do something kind for someone else, that fills their bucket and it fills your own bucket because you feel good doing something kind for someone else. She's laying down. So anyway, Mrs. Trinka in first grade talked to her classroom about AJ being someone to help fill buckets. And after AJ left her classroom, a little first grader said, "Mrs. Trinka, my bucket is overflowing." I thought that was really sweet. I had another comment where a specialist teacher who's known a boy for several years said, "Amy, I have never seen him smile." He's a fifth grade boy. "I've never seen him smile the way he smiled when he hugged AJ." She's like, "That was just amazing." So to hear these comments from students and staff has been really positive. And I'd say it's been going great so far. Does anyone have any questions or anything? Is there any?
Does it impact your day one way or the other with him there?
So I bring her only for half days or for a few hours at a time. So that way I feel like it's fine, it fits into my day fine. I love it because I'm greeted with the biggest smile. So I think it's great. It hasn't had any sort of negative impact on my day at all. It's only had positive.
Can we borrow him for the superintendent when he needs to be comforted? Yeah, and Amy, obviously very passionate about this. She brought this to Dave Geeson, the principal, and then also Amy Johnson. You know, they had to work through this and do some research and find out what other districts are doing. And like we told you this summer, we're going to bring Amy back with AJ and just give you a, you know, update. And we'll continue to do that as the year goes on. But yeah, as Amy said, it's been a very positive thing at Falcon Ridge for the kids. And there's a lot of research that goes out there doing that. So figure anything that can help kids, we're all for.
I'm, I'm so happy that our New Prague schools were willing to take a step and be proactive in this sort of approach. I'm very happy about it.
I'm sure all the other students will want them at their school once their friends start telling them about him.
This is our pilot project here.
I'm willing to share. I know the high school kids that do a career exploration, they come in and interview me every other week. They've asked a lot of questions when they've heard about her. You know, I'll tell them all about my job and they seem to always go back to AJ. They want, they have more questions about AJ.
I have a job where I can take my dog and help do it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Yep, thanks.
World's Best Workforce Presentation.
Good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent DeBurner. Thank you for having both Maran and I. Oh, Maran's not here yet. Here she comes.
Did you do that on purpose?
Yes, he did.
I have glasses on. We're going to discuss the World's Best Workforce. I'm just going to read a little bit as Maran kind of gets it up here. Under Minnesota statute, school boards are to adopt a long-term comprehensive strategic plan to support and improve teaching and learning. And this plan addresses the following five goals. All children are ready for school. All third graders can read at grade level. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career and college. And all students graduate from high school. Our district strategic plan is looked at and modified annually. The World's Best Workforce Plan is a multi-year strategic roadmap. Each year, we as a district develop a World's Best Workforce Annual Report. We engage in an annual public meeting, our district advisory committee, with stakeholders. And we release the annual report publicly on our district website. The annual report and annual public meetings are focused on the strategies and initiatives that our district engaged in to meet the goals and the progress made on those goals the prior school year. Therefore, our information tonight has to do with last school year, 2017, 2018 goals, how we did on them. And then also, Maran has included also the 18, 19 goals. So the World's Best Workforce legislation requires that districts submit a summary of the annual report to the Department of Education each year with your approval. The summary is brief and simple. And M D E reviews and provides feedback to districts that can inform continuous improvement efforts at our level. So we are here tonight to discuss our 2017, 2018 goals and their outcomes. At the end of our presentation, we will be asking for a motion to approve the 17-18 World's Best Workforce Plan, which will then be submitted to the Department of Education tomorrow. Our website has the World's Best Workforce on it. And when we do receive the information back from the Department of Education, we of course share that and review that with Superintendent DeBurner and the principals. At this time, Maran's going to go through our areas of the World's Best Workforce.
Hello. So our first, our first goal is for our preschool children and ensuring readiness for kindergarten. And so in working with Mary Bartusik as our early childhood supervisor, these goals were created really to ensure that we're meeting the needs within her program and preparing them for their kindergarten education and beyond. So you'll see our three goals that are listed. We were working on enrollment. We were with our, with our regular preschool program. We were working with enrollment for our ECFE programming. And then we're also looking at an increase in getting our students screened at the age of three. So you'll see that we met our first goal in our preschool enrollment. We did not meet our other two goals. But you'll see the data is there that they both were increased. But we did not meet the increase enough. In working with Mary, her goals to align to a strong entrance to kindergarten, her goals for this upcoming school year that she's been working with her leadership team with in the preschool, is she's looking at very, very similar goals, but looking at different increments with that. So we hope to report next year at this time that we've met all three of those goals. Goal number two is around third grade literacy. And so this is where we are looking at multiple data points to ensure that our students are literate by the time they are in third grade. So this is really a reflection of our pre-K up to third grade literacy program. And so for this, we looked at our M C A testing results along with our Fanta-Simpanel assessment that our, that our teachers administer on a one-on-one basis with our students. And so you'll see that our goals here were looking at an increase, not only in our M C A proficiency, going from that 61.8% to 65%, but we are also looking at our cell of students who exceeded the standards. And we were hoping to meet having at least 20% of our students exceeding that range. And then we also looked specifically at our students on their Fanta-Simpanel assessment. And again, that assessment is administered by our teachers on a one-on-one basis. And students K, K5 are given that assessment. And so by the time that they are in third grade, that's an assessment that they are used to having. That assessment is done two to three times per year with every student provided by the classroom teachers. We did not meet either of these goals. However, we were close with, particularly with the percent of students that were exceeding. As you may recall, our goal was 20%, but we did have 15%. And keep in mind that in third grade, that is the first year that our students are assessed on the M C A. So it really is a baseline. We also did not quite meet our goal of having our students at a higher proficiency rate on the Fanta-Simpanel assessment. Here is just a data spreadsheet for you to be able to see. You know, we're really close with the state average. And one thing that was really exciting this past year in looking at our 18 data was that we surpassed the state. And our goal is to always be above the state. And we did that. So though we did not meet our goal of 20%, we flopped with the state and we grew in that area. You'll also see here our proficiency overall. So again, though we did not meet our goal that we wanted for our third grade reading percent, you'll see that we did increase significantly from the state average. And giving you the three years' worth of data, also keep in mind that this is a different cohort of kids every year when looking at the data. And then this provides you with Fanta-Simpanel data for the students and takes it back all the way to kindergarten. Because as I mentioned earlier, we do, do the Fanta-Simpanel assessment on our students starting when they are in kindergarten. So this provides that data looking at different trends on a yearly basis. Our goals for this next year surrounding third grade literacy specifically is we're going to continue to really look and use the M C A and both Fanta-Simpanel data points as, as measures for this area. So we are continuing to work on our professional development around literacy and really ensuring that all students are giving, getting the services that they need to, to ensure that they are at or above grade level. Our next area is looking at our achievement gap. And for this component, for the, for last year, we were looking at our proficiency gap between our free and reduced lunch population and our non-free and reduced lunch population. And we looked at this both in reading and in math. And you'll see the data comparing it from 2017 to 2018. And we want, we want to get this gap smaller. And we did not meet either goal in our literacy or math. However, you'll see our, our data here shows our, our gap. Really, our discrepancy among has really maintained the past couple of years. And so we're, we want to, you know, try to target this area a little bit more. And both, you'll see this is the, the reading graph. And so reading, we did increase slightly, but not enough to, to meet our goal in that area. For this next year, we're going to be looking at our free and reduced population compared to our non-free and reduced population. And we are also looking at our gap between our special ed students and our non-special ed students. So both in literacy and in math. And when we look at this data, we are talking about, because we use the accountability test, that's looking at our M C A data and our M T A S data and our E L data. So it's primarily encompassing students in grades three through 11 is when, is the data that we look at when we use this. Our fourth goal is career and college readiness. And for this component, we focused on our eighth grade students and looking at their M C A data. Again, really, you know, this encompasses our program, really from pre-K all the way up to grade eight when, when we look at this data. And so for, for the last school year, we looked at both literacy and math and looking to increase, increase the data. And though we did not meet the goals here, the goals were very lofty. And our middle school has a strong reputation of performing high. And so we continue to set the bar even a little bit higher. And you'll see with these trends, we are still significantly above the state average and strong proficiency as a whole, eighth grade, but really, really the 6-8 literacy and math is very, very strong. And you'll see this graph also shows the literacy gap. And not only did we grow our gap with the state, but we also grew our proficiency significantly in literacy. So that was exciting to see, even though we did not meet our goals. For this next year, as Mr. Gregor has been working with his leadership team, we decided to add a science component in this because our eighth grade students are measured with the science M C A. So we will be looking at the math, the literacy, and the science M C A data points this spring when we, when we look at this. So though, again, these goals are high, we are, we're hopeful that the goals can be met with the strong instruction that occurs at the middle school. Our last World's Best Workforce goal is graduation. And our goal here was that 98% of students would graduate compared to 92.4% in 2017. And we did not meet this goal. However, I have included the graduation rate comparing our district to the state. And here again, you will see our significant gap, which is always something we are proud of, to ensure that we, you know, have that high, high rate. So we did not meet our goal here, but we are maintaining a high discrepancy from the state and, and working with our high school teachers and ensuring that our students are reaching that end goal of graduation. So our final goal here for this next year is to have 97% of our seniors graduate this spring. And so for tonight, we are, our principal. And so, um, for tonight, we are, um, our principals have been working with their building leadership teams and continue to have an on- ongoing discussion about what they are doing and what we are doing as a district to meet, uh, the identified goals that we discussed. What questions do you have for us?
The part that sticks out the most is most goals were not met. Is that a concern of the Department of Education, or is that just something that maybe you were too lofty on everyone?
So because these goals are set by us, um, we, we could reflect and say the goals perhaps were a little too lofty when we set them to begin with.
Okay. And it's not a concern to the Department of Education if there's an issue there?
No, no. So we will submit our plan to them, and, um, what they are looking for is really the context in terms of what are we doing? And so that's part of the narrative that Tony and I have been working on with the principals in terms of, um, what are our steps to ensure, ensure that our goals are being worked on? So though we may not be meeting the goals, um, they are looking for that dialogue of, of the action of what is actually happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question about the graph on the Fanta-Simpinell.
Sure.
It, it seems like every grade went down every year, and I'm not, what is that indicating? Is, is there a change in measuring, or?
Nope. So, um, so Fanta-Simpinell is a, is a test, as I mentioned, where the teachers are interacting with the students, so it's a different type of assessment than an MCA. And whereas the MCA is more of a standardized assessment, we also have the FAST assessment that we also assess our students, um, typically three times a year, if not up to five times a year. So Fanta-Simpinell is, I would say, it's a, it's a different data point than what our students are maybe used to, to. And so, that, that piece is not a concern for us right now, um, because we look at Fanta-Simpinell, we look at our MCA data, and we look at our FAST data to, to really determine the gaps and the needs. And the benefit of the Fanta-Simpinell assessment is it allows teachers to have an authentic conversation with a student about a fiction book and/or a nonfiction book, and so they can really get to the heart of the student and, um, work on strategies with them to help them grow.
It's more, isn't it more of a diagnostic assessment versus?
Yes.
When we talk about standardized assessment, like MCA's, it's more criterion referenced? This is more of a diagnostic assessment? And so they have the kids read and?
Yes. Yep.
That type of thing? So really?
I just thought it was interesting that everything went down, and you'd think there'd be changes between grade levels or whatnot.
Yep. And it is a subjective assessment in that regard, so it, it, you know, sometimes it can be, um, we, we try to, we work on that, too. Um, but there, there is that piece of it, because it's not standardized and it's not computer-based, um, there can certainly be a little bit more room for error, I would say, on that.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to mention, too, we've got, you know, everyone here, from Mary Bartusik with, uh, uh, our early childhood education, uh, Amy Johnson with, uh, special education, and then all of our principals are here, um, you know, putting this together, and, uh, you know, if, you know, if you have any questions for them or whatever, but, uh, obviously, they've got, uh, action steps and goals set for this year to continue to improve. If you look at the overall picture, you might say our goals might be a little lofty, but I'd rather have them a little too high than a little too low. But as you can see, when you compare to the state average, we're doing quite well.
Yeah, I wonder, like, just for example, the graduation, to jump from ninety-two to ninety-seven is, I mean, you could go to ninety-four and still be doing well on it, so.
Right.
I'm not sure how you picked those specific numbers, but all good.
Well, Mr. Boothey, uh, though, obviously, the math scores were real, real high, but how would you explain in the eighties and nineties, they were quite a bit higher than this?
I'd have to ask first, Donnie, how they scored in the eighties and the nineties when we didn't have the MCAs.
I think it's the teachers.
I was being very careful, though, that's the first thing I was gonna say. So, I appreciate that.
There was a motive behind that question.
It's some good, good special ed teachers, too, Donnie.
My students, right?
Yeah, one of his top students, Kim Holden.
Well, at this time, we'd like to ask for a motion, we do have the school board approve the seventeen eighteen world's best workforce, and then tomorrow we will send in the actual summary, and then MDE reads it, and then they provide us feedback, like Maren explained, um, not so much just on the goals, but how we are trying to reach them, close the gaps, and, uh, and reach those goals.
I'll make a motion to approve the world's best workforce presentation.
I'll second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank, thank both people, you did a very good presentation and a very good job. Thank you.
Uh, next, we're gonna go over a short summary of the superintendent review for the fiscal year twenty seventeen eighteen. Um, this has been done, as in prior years, by sending out a survey to the admin, people who report directly to the superintendent and to the members of the school board. Uh, we received responses from all seven school board members and all ten of the admin staff that report to Mr. Dipburner. Um, as in previous years, that's been very positive review, um, high level of satisfaction with the superintendent's performance. Um, not surprisingly, the highest rated thing is the superintendent is enthusiastic and positive, and that was a four point nine out of five point oh, I think, eh, that he rated it from a gr- strongly agree down to disagree, and, uh, that's not surprising. Um, the two areas where he has consistently improved every year, uh, on the financial aspects and the learning technology, um, those are both above four now, and, uh, making progress towards a...
It's coming along.
And Tim set some goals for himself, um, for the year, one of them was to develop a sound financial and communication strategy to pass the local operating levy. Um, the levy was successful, and the board would like to acknowledge the superintendent's work on this, because he played a big part in getting out the, uh, community presentations and answering all the questions. Um, a couple of the comments, and this is attached to the, um, online, so if, if anyone would want to read it, um, Tim excels in enthusiasm and positivity. Uh, one other item some of the board members noted is we'll try and get some more training this spring, since we'll have three new members on the board. We've, uh, had many members on for many years, so, and I guess one of our new members has been on before, so she won't need any training. No. Um, uh, some other comments, Tim gives his administrators autonomy and authority to do their job. Um, uh, one criticism, sometimes decisions are made too quickl- quickly or without impo- input from the staff that may be affected, um, and we continue to work on all decision-making together. Uh, if anyone has any other questions about this, they can email a board member, but overall, it's very positive review, and thank you for all the work you've been doing.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your support.
And next, we're gonna go over Tim's contract. Sandy will go over the highlights of it.
Okay, there was a subcommittee of the board, it was, um, Kitten and Jerry and Denny that worked with, um, Tim and myself on the new superincon- superintendent contract. Um, his three-year contract ends June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. It's very common to enter into a new contract before the first of the year, um, because if a contract can't be entered into, that gives the board enough time to find a replacement. Um, uh, I am pleased to report that we were able to, um, enter into another contract with Tim, and we're here to ask, tonight, to ask for approval. Um, the salary, we, um, are proposing a two and a half percent, uh, salary increase per year, that's the base percent that the, uh, memora- memorandum of understanding employees, um, received, um, uh, last year and this year. That would give his final salary in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, um, to one eighty-four, six eighty-seven. Also proposing to increase vacation days from thirty to thirty-five. This recognizes the fact that Tim puts a lot of extra time in, um, at, at night events and coaching. I'm just kidding. Um, a lot, a lot, a lot of events, and, uh, for him to be able to, um, take that time off to, um, to, to, um, rest is important. Also, want to increase the mileage stipend to five hundred dollars a month today. Currently, we offer a, a partial mileage stipend for in-district travel, and then we reimburse him for any travel outside of the district. MSBA is recommending the district change that to one way or the other, uh, for legal reasons, based on a state auditor's, um, opinion. And so, we're gonna be increasing that to five hundred dollars a month, that is, um, taxable income to him, and then he does not have to track, uh, he and Janelle do not have to track all the mileage that he has, um, in and outside of the district. We're also recommending that we increase the, uh, annual four oh three B district contribution by five thousand dollars a year. This really is in recognition of the fact that about half the districts in our comparable districts offer very large severance and/or retiree health packages. Um, Tim has, has neither, he has some annual contributions to a post-retirement HRA for, um, health and pre- health insurance premiums after retirement. He also has, um, a four oh three B annual contribution, um, to recognize the fact that when he became superintendent, he gave up, um, his principal severance that he had earned, um, in the district. And so, we try to run that, um, balance between being too generous and not being generous enough for a position, uh, like his in, in our comparable districts and surrounding districts, so recommending, uh, an increase to that. We also have some language changes, we basically want to mirror the MSBA superintendent model contract, so we just had some minor language changes, um, for that. We try to mirror the policies always, and so, thought it was a good idea to try to mirror the superintendent contract as well. Any questions?
Oh, can I get a motion to approve the contract?
I'll make a motion, we approve the, uh, contract to Superintendent Tim Dipburner.
I'll second.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Uh, next, we need to approve the twenty twenty Europe tour.
I make a motion, Madam Chairman, that we approve the twenty twenty European tour.
And this is for the, they did a trip this year, so they're doing a similar trip to Europe next year. Uh, any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Memorandum of Understanding for the Neptune Swim Club Coach. Can't even say that.
Yes, we had approved all the individual MOUs back in April or May, I forget which, um, month, um, but when we were doing all, our, our swim club coach didn't start until December of last year, so when we were discussing all of the contracts, starting in March, it just seemed a little premature to, to discuss that. We weren't even sure if, you know, it, being an employee for only three to four months isn't a long time to evaluate how it's going, so I just held off until his first year anniversary, and basically, um, the only change is a, is a, is a slight salary increase, again, the two and a half percent. The first year is prorated, because he wasn't here a full year, and the second year of the contract is, um, no, that's just, it's just one year. Yeah, it's just one year, yeah, just a small increase, and then he'll get back on the schedule for the following year.
What, uh, does this entail? Do they have competition against other schools, or are they putting on a musical?
Yeah, we have a swim club with approximately one hundred members, um, they're children from the age of grade school all the way through high school, and they, um, practice every night in the pool, if you're there, they're practicing all the time, then they have swim meets, some we host here and some they go places, and they can even get to, you know, state championships and so forth. It's a very big, um, thing, swim clubs in the state of Minnesota, very, very large. They're a member of, uh, Minnesota Swim, that, um, supervises and oversees all the swim clubs in, in the state of Minnesota.
And that's year-round, that they train?
It is year-round, yeah. They have a couple of different seasons, and they take one month off, I think, in August.
Yeah, but the, the revenue from that pays for...
Yeah, the revenue from that pays this, and then some, yeah.
And then some.
Yep. It's part of our aquatic center.
I'll make a motion to approve the memo of understanding between Neptune Swim Club and the coach. Second.
Go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero. Uh, New Prairie Area Education Foundation Grant Approval. Like, there's one item at Falcon Ridge, mindful movements?
Yeah, and I just want to comment on First Bank and Trust, I mean, uh, this is for the collaborative learning spaces at the high school.
The next one.
Well, that is the next one.
It's, yeah.
Listening.
Resolution.
You said I was a good listener in the...
So I think we just...
Have to make approval.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve the Education Foundation Grant.
I'll second the motion.
And, and it's for mindful movements, yoga-based movements to unwind the nervous system, uh, at Falcon Ridge. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Now we need resolutions.
Now, Tim, you can talk about the First Bank and Trust resolution.
Yeah, we're just, uh, very grateful for the donation from them, uh, donation of ten thousand dollars for new colla- collaborative learning spaces at the high school, and, uh, First Bank and Trust, you know, one of their big focuses on supporting education in the communities they're in, so, uh, worked closely with Tony Boothey and, and Nicole on this, and, uh, they want to do something to give back, and if it's a, a need that we need to do at the high school, so we're very grateful for that.
Do you have a plan of what that looks like?
Um, I don't think it's been worked out yet. Nicole, you want to just comment on this real quick?
We are still working out, um, specifics and details, but very generally speaking, we have the second floor of our media center that's currently not really utilized, um, but it's actually a very nice space, so we are looking at reconfiguring that, um, and turning that into a more collaborative, flexible learning space that teachers could check out for more collaborative or inquiry-based learning, um, or students could use it, um, if they have a study hall, or if, um, there may be PSEO students, um, and we're looking at a variety of furniture that can be easily reconfigured, moved, has access, um, to, um, electrical outlets for charging stations and, um, monitoring, so that they can do some screen sharing and mirroring when they're working on something on one of their Chromebooks, so.
Yeah, and I should mention, Eric Krogman, the president of, uh, First Bank and Trust, has been working with us on this, and he's the one that got the ball rolling, so we're very, very appreciative.
All right.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution to accept a donation from First Bank and Trust.
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the First Bank and Trust wishes to donate ten thousand dollars for new collaborative learning spaces at the high school, now therefore be resolved by the New Prairie Area School Board of Education, shall accept the donation under the prescribed conditions. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next is a second resolution. That I won't be voting on.
Uh, next, I'll, uh, accept the, a motion to consider the resolution to accept the donation from Kitten and Brad Shainbar. I'll make the motion. Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas Kitten and Brad Shainbar wish to donate five thousand dollars to the high school theater program for constructing shelves and hanging space for the costumes and sets stored above the lighting booth in the auditorium at the high school, with any remaining funds directed toward other theater items. Now therefore be resolved by the area school board of education, that they shall accept the donation under the prescribed conditions. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kitten, whoop, you're, uh, standing. Uh, Kim?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Thank you, Kitten and Brad.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, who wants to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.